Yeah, they cut it back.
Yeah.
That's what's causing the pain, it's flapping around in there. It takes.
Yeah.
They can't.
They won't replace it all.
They usually can on a roof tear like I have. We're good, thank you. Alrighty, good afternoon, everybody. This is the regular meeting for the nineteenth of February twenty twenty five with the Water Valley Select Board. I am Rich Reader, the Chair, joined today by Vice Chair. Um, Bob Fries and Select Board Member Wendy Rathgill. Takes care of quorum and call to order. A privilege of the floor. I see just seats in the floor, so it's quiet, alright? Approval of minutes, so we just had two, I got a little lost in the back and forth there, but it's just the fifteenth.
Fifteen.
I apologize, it's getting to the, I think it was the fifteenth today, I did realize I may have missed one, but. I had some changes, I don't know if you guys had a chance to look at the fifteenth.
Yep.
Everybody good?
I mean, I'll trust that you did your very thoroughness, so. Be fine, sure.
It's suffered somewhat lately because of drugs, prescribed drugs.
That's how we're starting.
That's how rumors start. Who wants to waste time on drugs, it's all about booze, man, I'll tell you, when you get a certain age, right?
So I'll make a motion to.
Yes, I'm waiting for emotion.
The minutes of January fifteen twenty twenty five and January twenty two twenty twenty five as amended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, right. Alrighty, so town report submission and uh, do you have first draft on that? Still working on it?
Still working on it.
Okay.
Um, the town report uh, is in printing now. Uh, hopefully, end of the week or Monday, we'll have it. And we will get it out to the post office and. And have them available here. Uh, once we get the printed copy, we'll also do a link uh, on the town website. Which will go out by email when we do the announcement.
And you were able to make that warrant.
We were able to make the warrant article change, and I just wanna publicly thank the printing company for being very cooperative. And they had not found them yet, so fortunately, we were able to intercept the print, so. Yep.
Alright.
And can I?
Go to the floor. We may, yeah.
Can I just, uh, yeah, go ahead.
No, no, on, on this issue.
Yeah, on this issue, on the town report, uh, I just wanna make a note, uh, because it'll be on the recording. That uh, the wording on the community power warrant article will be to establish a capital reserve fund. Um, so it'll be like all of the other capital reserves that we have, just for the purpose of. The uh, community power. Uh, projects. So that's all I have.
And so we'll look at the script, uh.
Look, I, I will get them out to you before the weekend and then I will. Uh, we can look at them at the next meeting, you can provide me with input before that, changes before then if you want.
Exactly. I want to get with that. Okay. Yeah. Tom, I see you just walked in, I privilege the floor.
Good day, thank you.
Okie dokie. Alright, moving on to old business. So, do we have a signed deed on the Britain property?
He has not stopped into the office, it is not signed.
Can we deliver it to him, is he in town?
He is not in town, so that's what I'm waiting for him to be back here, so. Well, as soon as he comes into town, he's supposed to come to Town Hall, so. I don't know whether it was the storm or what prevented him from getting here. But it is sitting at Kristen's desk and we will get him to sign it as soon as possible.
Great, great, and then we'll reengage with the state via our representative.
I mean, it's up to you guys, but with me, I just sit on my hands at that point.
Instead of reaching right up to the state?
Uh huh.
Instead of reaching right out to D E S?
Let them come to us, that's what I, that's what I would do, but.
Okay.
At least, at least wait till we're closer to the new budget cycles.
Well, that's what I was thinking, I mean, we, we, the thing, the number we'll need to know is how much, if anything, it'll cost in twenty. Twenty-six, right, I can't imagine they're gonna levy anything on us for this year.
No.
I think it's kinda early.
We think it'd be sad on your hands, you wouldn't have anything, it's just, it would just go away, is my, my guess, but.
Okay.
It's been fifty years.
Yeah.
What's another year or two, right? They do catch up with us eventually, we found out from the transfer station. But we had a good, what, fourteen year?
Fourteen, forty.
Forty year run?
Yeah.
Well, in that case, we're in violation, which is different than this.
Here, we're not really in violation.
Alright. So I guess the. Next issue is the Osceola Road Acceptance Warren Article?
Yeah, I just wanted to quickly go over this. Sure, I know. Shows you graphically. So we have the meeting with uh, Alan Slabodnik. Um, I will turn this towards the camera here in just a second. Um, the. Uh. There are gonna be two different areas, one as, yeah, you can hand this out, no. I'll, I'll go up to the camera in just a second. Um.
Yeah, it's still hard, the focus doesn't work.
So, uh, there are two areas, a right-of-way area and an easement area on your black and white.
Mm-hmm.
You can hand these out, maybe, I got some extra copies, people wanna look at in here.
So I actually a shaded version?
Dark, yeah, the dark area is the right-of-way area, the lighter lines outside of that is the easement area.
It's like the dotted line, is easement?
Yeah, the dotted line.
So it's a little bit lot wider than the?
It's about, it's five feet on either side, wider than the right-of-way.
Okay.
The intent would be for the orange, the darker one on your black and white map. To actually be deeded, that'll be described. And it would be deeded to the town, just like the rights-of-way were on Cascade Ridge, River Road. Um. Lost Pass, uh, all of them, Golden Heights, those were actually deeded to the town.
And what's the width of those?
That's, this one's gonna be thirty feet.
Uniform?
Uniform thirty feet is the dark shaded.
Okay.
Okay, the reason that it's a little bit different with Osceola is. On those other examples that I had, we had a uh, a subdivision plan that laid out. The rights-of-way. So the property lines for all the parcels along the roads went to the edge of the right-of-way. This is just one big lot because the condo association is treated as a single property.
Okay.
Okay, so we, I haven't talked to town council yet, I'm, I was basically waiting until we get. The decision from town meeting. Uh, we may have to do a subdivision here because we would be separating this one lot basically into three lots.
How's that?
You would, you would have a lot here, you would have the road right-of-way lot, and then you would have.
Oh, I see, I see.
So.
The right-of-way becomes a separate.
The right-of-way would be separate because the town would have ownership of it, not the association.
Hmm, it doesn't go with the road, it's in terms of when we accept the road as.
That is what our acceptance would be, is to accept that right-of-way, that's accepting the road because it's.
Including the road, I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
It's a paved area and drainage on either side of the road.
So that becomes a separate lot?
Correct.
Hmm.
Pavement is twenty-two feet wide, Megan? Yeah. So there's, there's a paved strip that goes down and then you have drainage on either side. And that's what's included in the way.
And uh, you referred to this uh, maintenance easement as a compliment.
Maintenance easement gets us from thirty feet out to forty feet. But the town doesn't own the easement area, so it would go from the edge of the right-of-way. To the edge of a non-specific maintenance easement. It can be drawn on a map like here. But it would, it would not be defined and it would not be transferred to the town, it would just be the. Um, it would be High Country's property that we would have a maintenance easement on.
So what happens if there's damage on that property?
On that property.
On that ten feet?
In, on that ten feet, we, we use it for maintenance of the road and then. If we damage it, we re- restore it. Um.
Unlike, unlike. Road ri- right-of-ways in the rest of the town.
Yeah.
We.
In the, in the rest of the town, if we damage something.
Yeah.
It's, they, they built, they put it too close to the road.
Right.
Well, in, in this case.
In, no, in this case, that rule would apply up to the edge of the right-of-way, so if they do something. And it gets damaged, the easement.
Something in the right-of-way, we're not obligated to.
If it is in the easement area, we are not obligated to do anything, all we're using the easement area for is to maintain. The pavement. So we, just given that you have to dig and you have to have equipment go around. Thirty feet is very narrow.
Right.
So we wanna have some additional room, five feet on either side. So that we can do the maintenance work that we have to do. If there's anything within that five-foot. Area that we damage when we are maintaining the road, then we will have to fix it. But other than that, it's their property and they're responsible for it.
That be specified in the easement?
Specified in the easement document.
But that, get, getting back to my point, that that is different than the rest of the town then?
It is, because if you, if you go out to the full forty feet, you start getting into. Some of their landscaping.
Right.
You get into the entrances off into the parking areas.
Pavement or apron, driveway apron.
Exactly, so we. Were thinking that we go with the, the width of the pavement that was installed. And the drainage that, because there are some culverts and there are drainage structures within that thirty-foot. Wide, that would be what was actually transferred to the town. Just like we have it on every other town road.
And when you say thirty feet, you're talking twenty-two plus?
Twenty-two plus eight, so four feet on either side of the pavement. And it would all be measured from the center line of the existing pavement. Right, so it would be fifteen feet either side of that point. Which is the way that most of our easements, uh, our rights-of-way are written.
Is there a way, oh, sorry, is there a way to discourage landscaping within the easement area, I mean?
We mentioned that to uh, Alan.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, they're gonna have to understand that, you know, as we go through and plow. The, the maintenance easement is also for winter maintenance.
Right.
And down here at the end, it actually is widened so that we can plow off to the side.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and we have snow storage area down at the end, and that's it, that is.
Right, the very end, yeah, right?
See how it's shaded a little bit there, yeah, that area. We need snow storage, we need to have access to that property without being on private property. So the easement will describe an area down here that is wider.
Mm-hmm.
Do we actually have maintenance easements in other parts of the road or just right-of-way?
It's just right-of-way because most of our rights-of-way, yeah, but most of our rights-of-way are forty or fifty feet wide. If we took a right-of-way that wide in here.
Yeah.
We would be into their parking area, and we, we wanted to stay away from that, we, we don't wanna own. At least in my opinion, the town wouldn't wanna own the. Maintenance of those areas, so you let them continue to maintain it like they currently are, and then we just have a right. When we need to, to maintain the road to go out into it.
So Mark, with respect to the easement area. What's currently in it, are there trees in there?
There's some trees, there's some grass, there's bushes, yeah, it's mostly grass, but there are some bushes, there are some trees.
Do we have any concern that the plowing will?
I, we think.
Dump salt in that area and kill their trees?
It might.
Have you discussed that with them?
Yes.
I, we did, this morning, yes, we had a discussion.
They're cognizant of that.
They are.
But then we're responsible for that.
Exactly, that's a hiccup. If, if, if we kill that tree, we shouldn't, I mean.
Well. It. We try, the easement area is gonna give us the least responsibility to main, to, to maintain that. Um, it's still, yes, there are gonna be some of those items that are gonna fall within the easement area. But it's gonna be less maintenance in the long run than having it as all right-of-way, where we would be responsible for. For everything.
So do we need a, a revised survey then of this?
No, they actually have all of this data and that's the other thing we asked Alan to do was to prepare the map. So if we have to go to the planning board for a subdivision, they would provide the engineering, the map. That, that shows, it, it would be prepared for recording. And we also asked their council to draft the deed document so that town council could. Uh, review it. And he agreed that he would do that.
Can't we just stipulate within the easement area?
Mm-hmm.
That any damage, any incidental damage to landscaping would not be.
Whatever wording, whatever wording you guys want, then, then we will. That's part of the negotiation that's in the warrant article, right, you're, the board is given the. Uh, responsibility of negotiating that.
Yeah.
So the warrant article says that we can, we can negotiate this, it doesn't approve it at the town meeting?
Correct, this, this would be just showing the intent to town meeting of what we're trying to, to transfer. But the actual transfer negotiation and finalization in the warrant article is left to the select board.
Yeah.
So what if we can't come to an agreement?
And then you don't, and then you come back to the next town meeting and tell them you couldn't reach an agreement and. Ask them what they want, what you, what they want you to do.
I think.
All they're doing is authorizing the acceptance of the road as a town-maintained road. Under the terms and conditions that you guys.
Is that how it's been done before, or is it, or is it uh, fait accompli when it comes to before the town?
It was different in every other situation, like I said, because there was a subdivision plan that was already approved. And it was, this is the right-of-way.
Forty, fifty feet.
Of forty or fifty feet, and you didn't have to worry about the easement area, and you didn't have to worry about. Who was responsible for what, because it was clear in the subdivision point.
Right, I mean, it's always was a discussion point in planning board meetings, on the width of the road and the right-of-way, right?
Yeah, so this, this is different than any other.
I would just stress that.
Yeah.
Good.
Alright, we'll think about it.
Okay. So that's, you know, we, uh, Alan has gotten all the documentation that we had requested the um. The agreement letters between the Stutzmans and the, and the homeowners association on the drainage project. He provided us with plans for that. Um, they, he agreed today that, that the actual transfer would not, will not happen until that's. Completed as a project and accepted by Megan in writing, so. They, they still have work to do this summer, so we have plenty of time to, to talk to them about it.
But in all respects, this road does meet. Town standards.
The twenty-foot wide paved.
Which is always key.
And the subwork underneath that is all to town specs.
Mm-hmm.
What's, how's the current condition of that road?
It was brand new this past summer, it was all paved and, it was built and paved this past summer.
Okay, so we're not taking on a headache?
Well, well.
Well, let's see what the discussion is.
You never know with a road, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It'll be more.
These are legit, I mean, these are all legitimate questions that I think are part of the discussion with the condo association going forward.
And um, will the condo association be working with the private? Property that's on the other side of the road, the three or four houses, I think that there is it three houses?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, with regard to how they get, you know, the plowing, or we have to come, the town have to come to an agreement?
No, there's not, they have nothing to do with this, the, the three properties will all be maintained privately.
Right.
Like they are now.
Right.
And we did verify with Alan today that they have talked to their property management company.
Mm-hmm. They have three houses?
They have one, no, no, for the uh, for the condo association.
Oh, okay.
I don't know what the arrangement is for the houses at the end.
Yeah, I was assuming they had some kind of arrangement.
Well, it's gonna be like a driveway. Into a town road.
Okay, right, yeah, it makes no sense for them to have a. Have a set, those three houses at the end have a separate. Plowing contract.
I'm sure they do, they have three separate lots in there.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't know if they get together, well, maybe they got together.
Add on to the, and then add on to the, that's what I'm wondering about Osceola.
We didn't, we didn't.
Add on to High Country, you know?
With the easement area, uh, how does that impact these properties that are right here?
Stops, it stops at the High Country property line.
Okay.
It does not affect them, we're not going on their property at all with the easement area, so they would not have to be a party to it. It would just be between the homeowners association and the town.
Cause I think we. We have in the past made arrangements when town road ended, but a private. Driveway or road went beyond that and. I know it's something we do not like to do, but we entered into an agreement. And we, they pay us to do their plowing, right?
We will not fit.
We don't fit, our equipment.
Doesn't fit, right, I, I don't think I, I don't think you wanna go down that path, or in a point again.
No.
Cause that just led to a lot of.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
A lot of headaches, but they're gonna be kinda cut off at the end here, but it gets treated like a driveway, then they just get their own plowing company and.
Yeah.
There's gonna be a property management company maintaining all the parking lots in High Country.
Right.
They're gonna be right there.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, they're, anyway.
They wanna work out an, an agreement with the association to.
Right.
To utilize the same property management company, that's certainly an option that would be open to them.
And in this case, those same rules with regard to pushing snow over roads from private property and all that, they'll go down the middle of a.
Yep.
They'll have to.
They will have to.
Have to store their snow somewhere on their.
Yep.
Property enough, but. Plow it across.
He mentioned all of that, Alan did today, so they have been talking about it.
Alright, now we'll guess what, see what Tom thinks.
Can I bring up a similar issue, since, surely since Tom's here? Um, I was talking to um, Dave McIntosh, who's on, what's that road, Flat Mountain?
Yeah, Flat Mountain.
Flat Mountain Road.
Mm-hmm.
And ac- according to him. Um, down as far as Fernandez is. It's, it's a town road.
Mm-hmm.
But he, but with Dave, and Dave's across the street from him. And he says when the town plow comes down, it has to go to the end of the road to turn around anyway. So he says, he says that. He says that the town plow comes down and. At, after Fernandez's house, it's a private road.
Mm-hmm.
But the, our town go, plow goes to the end to turn around and. He says.
Why can't he push snow against that?
Well, they do, they push this thing.
Yeah.
I guess, that's what he's telling me, so he, he's, he, he, so he was just asking, how hard is it to get that section of road? The town to extend that section of, I'm just asking, I don't know.
Well, it depends on what the board wants to do, if the board, the board is empowered to accept a road. If, if they are, they, it was subdivided, it was subdivided, it was not subdivided with the intent. Of the town accepting that piece of road.
Where is this exactly?
It's at the end of. Flat Mountain Road, which is the road off to the right of, off of Lost Pass.
Piece of guardrail on the right.
It's a piece of.
And it's a few feet off, past that guardrail is where the town line is, and then it's. Uh, an agreement between uh. The town and uh, loose run to plow essentially to the hydrant to turn around.
It's probably a hundred feet further or something, or fifty feet further or something.
Talking about it here?
Yes, two hundred feet from the end of the.
Two hundred feet?
Two hundred feet from the end of the guardrail to where they push the snow. But keep in mind, after that guardrail, the lots, the road is on private lots.
Yes, it is, it is a, it is an easement, it is not a right-of-way.
Easement for four houses.
Drawing, the subdivision drawing.
Oh, so those, those homeowners owned to the middle of the road?
In some cases, all the way across.
All the way across, yes.
That complicates it.
It does.
Was that one of those shared driveway type ideas?
It's a four-house.
Yeah.
Shared driveway.
Yeah.
Anyway, I, I, you know, I said, wanted to come and talk, he come and talk to you about it, and.
Okay.
So I'm, I'm only bringing it up because we're talking about a similar issue and.
Sure.
I'll go over it with you again, fundamentally why the town can't take that road.
Okay.
Yeah, it's not to town specs like the other part of.
Right.
Uh. Flat Mountain, everything up to that line that. That Megan just.
So, so just the follow-up, so like this one?
Yeah.
If whoever owns that land.
Right now, it's the association.
It's the association or is it?
Oh, no, no, I'm sorry, which, which one?
It's on.
Individual homeowners own land.
Yeah.
But, but it's the same thing as the bottom of the other street, Drake's Brook.
Yeah.
When the town, it.
Yeah.
Town right-of-way, the forty-foot right-of-way ends, everything beyond that is on property of the, the three houses.
The homeowners would have to deed it to the town.
The kids have in there, lots become non-conforming.
Yeah.
Okay.
We, we, we stuck with those roads.
Alright.
That, that's why the driveway thing was so popular for a while, they could squeeze more homes.
But the downside was that.
Yeah.
It's their driveway.
Exactly.
Forever and ever.
Ever and ever.
Yeah.
So Bill Caitlin?
Yep.
Enough said. Squeeze as much in as you could. Right?
Okay.
Alright.
Thanks for the discussion.
Mm-hmm.
Alright, well, I'm sure we'll be discussing it more at Osceola Road at the town meeting. Uh, shall we move on then to the, an update on the uh, wastewater?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Dylan is out sick, uh, and um. He has had a, a couple of telephone conversations with Mario Francucci. Um, they, uh, I think he mentioned last meeting that they've provided us with the updated uh. Timeline. Um, we're still tracking with that, they owe us a major report uh, after town meeting. And we are still tracking to get that.
Okay.
Um, they were waiting for some plans from uh, Horizons Surveyor. Uh, so that they could finish the, uh, they could finish the um. Sewer lineup to the resort.
Oh, okay, so, right.
And finish that uh, document for us to review. So he, I did not get a chance, all I got was a text today from Dylan, so. I don't know time-wise uh, what the plan is right now to get that uh, survey. Um, from Horizons, but. We're very close.
Critical of that and the septic engineering that we needed to present to the.
Forest.
Forest service and to show the differences and the pluses and minuses.
Yeah. I'm hopeful we can get that done in March.
Okay.
Yeah.
If that's that tough timeline, right?
Yes.
Well, getting the federal government too.
If there's gonna be anybody there to review it. Good luck, yeah.
Be careful what you wish for, right?
Exactly.
Alright. Coalition Communities Update.
Yeah, um, there, we had a board meeting yesterday, um, we're uh. Tracking uh, about twelve bills right now, um. They are kind of all over the place, some of them do away with donor towns by law, some of them.
Thirty of them, I think, in the list you give, but you're talking about the top, the.
Top priority one.
Those are our priorities, right, that's the ones we're paying attention to.
Yeah.
Okay.
And so, um, that list, there's, there is one bill in particular, uh, House Bill six seventy-five. Which does several things, um, it reinstates donor communities, has. Towns send all of the. Of the uh swept monies.
Right.
And then they'll send back what? Your road? By law, right? So you.
Right.
Write a big check to the state and get a little check in our case.
Back.
Back. Um, and that's one thing that they're doing, so they, they formalize the donor communities that way. Because all of the money goes back to the state. Uh, I don't think that that has much chance of surviving because even. Receiver communities would have to send them money and then get money back and. So I would hope that that would not. Uh, happen. Um. But the formalization of donor communities and sending excess SWEP is a good possibility. Number two is it raises the.
How do they define?
Well, they, they, they do it.
Issue.
With a spreadsheet.
Yeah, I know, but isn't that part of the issue?
And that is part of the issue.
Big part of the issue.
Yeah, and they, number two, number two thing is it increases uh per pupil. Adequacy from forty-one hundred to seventy-three hundred.
Right.
Um, so basically swept more than doubles. Uh, because they also changed the formula. Uh, as part of that to give more credit to special ed and other specific programs.
Right.
Um, so. Uh, that would, that would more than double our. Uh. Our SWEP. Excess SWEP that we would have to send back. From about.
If we, if we were.
Five hundred and sixty-two, if we were a donor town from five hundred and sixty-two thousand to one point three million, so.
Because when, we're not really uh part of the suit with regard to the.
Cost of adequacy.
A adequacy.
Yep.
But it could impact us tremendously if they go back to the donor town model. If they don't.
Right.
It's just.
Right.
They're trying.
Hasn't the governor said she's opposed to it?
She did in her inaugural address, she did not reiterate that in the budget. She only stated support for special ed, additional funding and.
Vouchers.
Vouchers, school vouchers, so she did not say anything about the donor receiver communities. The board is trying to get a meeting with the governor so that we can find out what. Position will be on this. Um, and then uh the third thing uh would. Um, from six seventy-five, so we, uh, the third thing. Um. Is to increase aid for those specialties, English. Learning, uh, special education, they bump all of those up. Uh, as part of the funding, so it greatly increases the overall cost of education. Um, oh, and I'm sorry, there is a fourth thing and that is a cap. Uh, on the amount that school budgets can change. From year to year.
How do they establish that?
Uh, they just, they pick a percentage number and they say your, the school budget cannot increase by more than two and a half percent. I think is what's in the current. Language.
Yeah, I've seen, I've seen the uh, some of the coverage on that, that's caused a lot of problems.
That has caused a lot of concerns.
Yeah.
But.
Especially as.
Again, it's.
Like here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, uh, basically it is uh just a. Mischmash of all of these different ideas that they talk about every day. Um, all of them have to, unfortunately, all of the bills have to be voted on by committee.
Right.
By March sixth.
Well, we have a Supreme Court decision by then?
Don't think so.
I mean, that's.
So, we'll see.
Yeah, how could you vote on bills until you know what the Supreme Court?
Well, their, their timeline requires them to vote.
Their legislative.
Yeah. So, because they have to get ready, they have to get the bills ready to send to the Senate. Because then the Senate has all of their committee hearings. So we are continuing, we have our advocate that's there every day. Watching the bills. Uh, we've had board members testify on all of the bills. I did mention to Rich that. It may be time, one of the other things about this House Bill six seventy-five is it double, more than doubles the number. Of donor communities. We go from, no, not more than, no, little less than doubles. Uh, goes from twenty-seven to forty-seven. Uh, donor communities. Um, and some of them significantly. A town like Wolfboro, under the current plan would get five or six hundred thousand dollars in aid. Uh, from SWEP. Uh, above what they raised and then they, under the new plan, increasing to seventy-three hundred dollars per student. They then have to donate uh over a million dollars, so.
Hmm.
That's a big swing.
Yeah.
And a lot of those communities are the same way. So.
Okay.
Those additional twenty, uh, it may be. Beneficial for elected officials to reach out to other elected officials. We do not have. Much participation from select boards. Uh, in our group. Um, and really when legislators are looking at bills. Uh, rather than having an advocate there, uh, or. The paid staff, it's sometimes better to have uh elected. Officials coming in and testifying about what's happening in their communities. Um, and.
Right.
Our advocate and the, the board, the Coalition Community Board would be willing to help put together an agenda and.
Hmm.
Some supporting information if. A. An elected official wanted to try to get other. Select board members, cause you guys are the ones that are gonna get screamed at. If these changes are made.
Do we have any idea where our rep, state rep uh stands on it?
No, I don't know where she stands on it.
Be nice.
I would.
She'd come talk to us.
Anticipate that she would be.
For donor.
For donor communities.
Camped in Thornton. L's word is it as well?
Yep.
She's not camped in Thornton, I think she's.
Uh, Thornton.
Thornton. Oh, not camped.
But Thornton's a big receiver community, so I would anticipate that she would support it. I know Jerry Stringham. Uh, up in Lincoln Woodstock, he's now the rep for Lincoln Woodstock and he's supporting. The return to donor communities.
Oh, really?
So. Yeah.
So it is really cross cutting?
It is cross cutting. Republicans are the prime sponsors of House Bill six seventy-five. In fact, it's the House leadership that introduced the bill, the Speaker and the Majority Leader. Introduced the bill, so it cross, it crosses both parties and it's becoming very much a town by town. Situation. Because they represent big receiver towns. So. I think.
And no sense yet, Supreme Court.
They will not, they may give us one day's notice that the decision is coming out, but it will not say. Anything about the decision.
Right.
So until it is actually published, we don't know. They're very tight-lipped.
They don't have a deadline, do they?
No deadline. They're dealing with their own problems internally.
Right, right.
It's hard for them to get decisions out right now.
Alright, anything else on?
Nope.
That's wonderful.
I wish, I wish there were better news.
Alright, uh, review town core working group survey results and Wendy.
So this was um, a survey that the town core working group put out uh last quarter of twenty twenty-four. It was included in the water sewer bills, basically um asked participants to rank the importance of. Uh, three, four, five, six, seven, eight different aspects of items, um, kind of categories that were within. The study, the festeringization study. Um, unsurprisingly, the. The thing that was ranked highest in concern for folks was sidewalks and multi-use paths. Um, followed by close second with trail improvements and lighting. And then rounding off the top three of, of concern, um, is lighting. So those were the.
A package kinda.
Top three, yeah, you know, just. Kind of pedestrian wayfinding in my mind, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, well, not including signage, I guess that. But anyway, um, although that was a, that was.
That was very close.
Well, yeah, I mean, you can take, you look at it, those were the issues really.
So, um.
Pedestrian issues.
Yeah, so we just thought it was important to sort of make sure that. No pun intended, we're on the right path to addressing things. That people are concerned about.
And I think we are addressing all of those things within the proposed budget.
Budget, certainly.
Reading the comments.
Yeah.
Uh, it seemed, it seemed to me that they were. Some people were in favor of, you know, put these, these are the top priorities because they were. Against what we're doing.
Right.
Yes.
Or people who were in favor of what we're doing.
Right.
Right.
And the same thing with lighting, I mean, lighting is either, some people think it's, we need more lights. And some people think it's, we should have more dark skies and fewer lights.
Exactly.
Yep.
So. Uh huh.
Yeah, no, there were seventy-six comments, definitely. Did not show up a lot of cohesiveness, I don't think, you know. As far as how people are feeling.
You think trail and trail improvements, it was clear that they were, we're talking about trails. Like walking trails in town as, as opposed to the resorts trails?
I'm hoping so, but that's a good point. I mean, it was very clear that it was from the town, um, that we were distributing.
Yeah, but you know, I think the.
No, I hear you.
I mean, talk, people talking about gondolas and everything else in here and.
Oh, this was definitely a forum for people just to give their, but you know, I, I feel like that's part of what's important too, is just to. Get, and there were a few comments addressing this as well, that they appreciate the chance to communicate and have their opinions heard, so. Um. You know, maybe.
The comments are interesting, I thought.
Yeah, yeah.
They're all over the place.
They are. But I mean, I, I was kind of heartened by the number of people who did participate, I think it was a hundred and forty-something. Um, which was pretty good participation and, and something, you know. Only took five or ten minutes, but we know how these things go. So with a hundred and forty participants and. At least half of them leaving a significant, more than half of them leaving a significant comment, I feel like it was. People wanna engage.
Yeah.
See the thing.
Yep.
I, it, it just goes to si- to show that, you know, whenever we have an issue, whether it's lighting or whatever it is. You know, we ought to be getting public comment.
Yes.
On. Are we putting more streetlights in or are we putting, are we covering them up or, you know, what?
Exactly.
Uh, you know, how are we doing it? Cause.
Yeah.
The comments and all of these issues go both ways.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And this was called property owners, right?
Yes.
Wasn't just residents.
Correct. And I think it'll be interesting to see what the, what the comments, the discussion and the votes are at town meeting because we have put. More articles on, on just about all of these things.
Yep.
And so you're gonna see that.
Right.
Plus and minus, who's for it, who's against it, kind of discussion going on.
I didn't see any comments about select board not getting paid enough.
I didn't either, yeah, you're right.
You gotta ask the right questions.
I guess.
Sure, the prompt was in there correctly.
Okay, on that note.
Anyway, yeah.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Wendy. Let's move on to department head updates and uh. Chief Norris, what's going on?
Not too much, uh, a little slow with the weather. Uh, for, you know, what a typical start of vacation week is, but it's. Uh, we don't get to pick it, so we just go with it. We'll slow down with the wind and stuff, but. Uh, still a lot of people around, um. Here's an update for uh the engine, they're telling us they're live. The twenty-six, now they're five months behind.
Hmm.
We're pushing out seventy. Uh, pieces of apparatus a month. And that's where it puts us, we just got an update yesterday. Uh. On that, I, I don't. Know if I'd really want them to rush it, but.
Right. Right.
Uh, but that's the, that's the latest uh update that I have. There. Uh, the only other note is uh, we're working on the emergency notification system. Uh, just finished training on that, that's gonna take over for tip four one one. Uh, so. Hamline notifications, it's gonna be a very simple, you can sign up with your. Uh, phone number, if you wanna get text messages, your email, if you wanna get emails, or if you wanna download the app. You can get everything through the app, uh, but you don't have to if you don't want to. Uh, it's an opt-in program, we're gonna send it out through tip four one one. Now, we have that until uh the end of March. Uh, but we're gonna try to do a campaign ahead of that coming into town meeting, so hopefully we can. Uh, get it back to, how many people sign up, we'll have a, a tablet there. And just encourage people to sign up and we'll have it ready.
Then you say you can do something in the wig wag?
Yep, we'll do something in the wig wag, we'll do it on social media, on the website and. With our current system for all the subscribers that are currently on there, it'll have the link uh to go. Uh, through, it has our own kind of larva valley landing page, so when you sign up for it. It's just basically a, a name, password, and if you wanna put your.
Hmm.
Uh, how you wanna get your messages, whether it's text message, email, we'll vote. So. Uh, we'll be, we'll be working on that.
You might wanna post it in the post office, cause a lot of people go through there.
Yep.
Every day.
Yep. Yeah, well, we're gonna post there's uh just the graphics for that, it's just. Encouraging people to do that, so we'll, we'll make that. And that, we're gonna push that for the next few weeks, uh, leading into that transition. Uh, but other than that, uh, getting ready for Special Olympics, uh, Winter Games gonna be coming up. Uh, they moved, um, opening ceremonies typically on Sunday. It's now gonna be on Monday, uh, so following New Hampshire week. Was it March?
Yeah.
Second, first.
Thereabouts.
March third would be Monday.
Third.
Second is Sunday.
Yeah, so March third. Um, we'll be opening ceremonies. They'll already be here uh for some time trials and getting courses ready and set up. Uh, but you can expect to see them on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. Here, they'll give activity uh beginning of the week, but they pushed it back a day uh to give the hotels a little bit of extra time to get ready. Uh, for all the athletes, which. Makes sense.
So will it be the evening of March third?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, I'll post the itinerary, uh, they're still finalizing it, so I keep getting drafts and drafts, and I've been kinda holding off. Until. They're good with it, uh. Uh, we typically share our space here, so back bay. Uh, Megan's been gracious enough to allow us to move engine two down to. Uh, her building for the weekend, up to that, cuz we take all the coke deliveries, all the volunteers, get all their. Lunches and all that kinda stuff, so we kinda hand over the building. Uh, uh, big portion of the building to them, uh, for the event. Uh, we'll have the AG food truck parked out here, uh, but that's all, that's all typical stuff, so the only change. To our, to that schedule is just, it's gonna start on Monday.
Do you have a start time on that yet? Monday evening, Tuesday evening, yeah?
So usually seven thirty is opening ceremonies. Uh, about seven o'clock is the start, they have everyone out there staging. Uh, getting ready for that event. So, fallback fireworks and. Announcing of the athletes and the cruiser parade.
So, ski dr- score, ski drawing went fine?
Yeah. Very well attended, uh, uh, Colby Morrison was assigned to the detail, plus the booty officer, so we had. You know, dedicated person there, we did get three simultaneous calls. Uh, during the event, as soon as it started, uh, but.
A person picked.
They had nothing to do with ski drawing, uh, but.
They picked up the rope for the first person to be towed by a horse and the tones went for two calls. Within ten seconds, it was just amazing.
It's just. Sometimes, but, um, uh, leading up to that point, it was good because they seemed to manage it as. As agreed upon, and it seemed to go pretty well, so.
I was interested in your comment about the seft, safe tank program.
Yes.
Can you just elaborate on that a little bit?
Uh, safe tank program, so that's a DES program. Uh, it's, and I believe there's some federal dollars behind it, they're gonna quote me on that, so the program. The program, uh, it's been in, in existence for a while, but uh, DES will help. Uh, uh, reimburse the cost of removal of old oil tanks.
Really, okay.
Uh, because they're, they wanna make sure it's done properly and there's no.
A hundred percent reimbursement, do you know?
Uh, I believe it's a hundred percent, well, and up to a cer- up to twenty-five hundred dollars, so.
This should not be affected by the current climate in Washington, because this is an ex- this is an established fund.
Yes.
That the state has for.
I got a personal interest, that's why.
Yeah, if you go to the DES website.
Yeah.
And just search, um, safe tank program, they have all the details. You go to apply, I believe it's just a simple form you fill out.
Okay, great.
Uh, they encourage, and I think you have to use, you can't do it yourself, you have to use a. Uh, urban or whoever the provider is to certify that they've removed the tank, they sign off on that the tank's been. Properly disposed of, that sort of.
Okay, thank you.
Condo associations aware of this program?
I do, I don't know, it's a state program, but like Mark said, it's.
I wouldn't guess they are.
It's been around for.
And their, their fuel companies are, so if there's somebody who has a tank that. Needs to be replaced, they will be, they'll be usually told by the energy company that's servicing there.
Yeah.
There.
Good.
I just don't remember hearing any mention at all of anything like this, I was in the forest rim board and. You know, we had a lot of pressure on people to get rid of. Leaking tanks, if you will, cuz they had one over there at some point, and it was a huge expense.
Yep. Yep.
So we might wanna figure out a way to make sure they're all at least aware.
Mm-hmm. Well, you regularly talk to the property managers on a variety of issues, like, you can add this to the. Just remind them of it.
I personally didn't know about it until we did have a leak. Yeah, one of the nurses in the DES guy that came out to. Uh, investigated, mitigated, was the one that mentioned it to me, so. So, well, that's good to know.
Thank you.
There's some, uh, little bit of relief there, uh, for people looking to do that work.
I wonder if that can go in the. Um, I don't know who's writing the green corner now in the wig-wag, but.
Oh, yeah.
Some of. I think it was Jenny, but I'm not sure who, maybe they can just, you know, one little. Did you know that if you have a unused fuel tank in your backyard? You can get assistance, financial assistance in removing it.
Yeah, and I can reach out to my forehold.
Yeah, yeah, I'm not sure who's doing that, that'd be a good place to put it, don't you think? People think of that leaking tank.
Um, any other questions? Might have on the update.
Yeah, I sensed a little bit of frustration in what's been going down at Spear. In terms of their procedures and so forth.
They are, there is, at least there's a dialogue open, they're recognizing that there's a problem. Um, I'm not sure, y'all agree on what the solution is.
Yeah, and money.
Basically what it boils down.
Yeah.
Uh, it's either they gotta hire more orthopedic surgeons, or uh, they need a. Uh, dedicated uh, transport service that's willing to transfer these patients. And not rely on the town services to do it. So, um. We did, uh, we're doing our due diligence, getting them the information of, you know, how many uh, diversions we're doing. Um, you know, the types of patients that, that we're diverting, uh, and. Uh, they're gonna look at that and then come back to us with what they feel might be a. Uh, some sort of solution, but for right now. We're dealing with it, with it as best we can.
Is there still an X-ray machine at the home?
No.
No.
Uh, you did get my guidance for EV charging for.
Yeah, sorry, your hand out, that looked really, really good.
That sort of thing, you know, those types of properties uh, in town, so. Uh, it's a hot button topic, I know some associations have been a little bit more proactive. Uh, in that, but I think uh, it's gonna be a big discussion for a lot of associations. Uh, coming up, and a lot of people are asking. You know, what are, what are our thoughts and, uh, you know, some people are comfortable, more, more comfortable than others with. You know, charging indoors versus outdoors, that sort of thing, so. Like I mentioned, it, the state has a, a current committee, I'm waiting for. Uh, some of their recommendations before I would even recommend, you know, either some local ordinances or anything. Uh, regarding that, so basically mine's just recommendations.
Right. But you're pretty clear.
Would like to see.
What you wanna see, right.
What we would like to see based on our capabilities to be able to handle uh, those types of emergencies, so.
Charging stations out in parking lot, basically.
Basically boiled down to preferably, uh, uh, pedestal. Uh, charging, community charging stations, you know, away from buildings and, um, that way. When they get installed, you know, it's uh, adequate power sources and all the codes being done, and, um. Uh, it puts them away from any uh, other structures and that sort of thing.
Anything else for Chief Norris? Good, thank you. Hi Megan.
Hello.
How's the plowing, looks good?
Thank you, yeah, um. We were, they were here quite a, quite a while, almost thirty hours. Um, cleaning up, um, and then the second crew came in. And uh, finished cleaning up Monday and yesterday, uh, from the storm, we. In anticipation for the sun that we have this week, we did not um, use as much salt since the sun is out, we're. Trying to let it melt everything versus um, pelting it with a bunch of salt right now. Um, if it's still a little icy towards the end of the week, we will lay very little salt just to help break that up going into the weekend. Um.
Do we have enough salt, I saw a TV uh, news story last night on TV about lack of salt available?
So, um, our. Vendor that we use, um, we. Give a rust, rough estimate of how much salt we're gonna use for the season, and they dedicate that many tons to us for the season. Um, I normally go roughly a hundred tons over what we are anticipating using, just in case there are, it is a heavier. Usage of a year, um, but we are set for the rest of at least this. Um, twenty-four, twenty-five season, and the next twenty-five, twenty-six season, I'll submit a different um, quantity. To offset that, but we are set from our vendor, we do not have any shortage issues on our end for salt. So, um.
You pay for what you take delivery on, or do you pay for what you commit?
Only what we take. Um, it, they just commit that amount, so if, let's say we go over, let's say I commit, you know, seven hundred tons. We go over that, there's no commitment to us that we're gonna get that salt, but the first seven hundred we are committed to getting if we use that.
Do you remember when that was, Bob?
Last night.
Last night.
M U, M U L last night.
I've, I've been watching it, uh, over the past few weeks, it started over in New York, um, that the salt shortage happened. Um, up in Bethlehem, they're having a salt shortage with their vendor, um, so there's a, a couple of towns.
The closest one that they interviewed was a guy from St. John's Berry.
Yes, that one as well, um, so we're, a couple of towns are filling it, we fortunately right now we're not. Um. And then, so rash, um, with some sicknesses and people being out, we were a little bit behind going into this week, but we're. We've caught up. And then the trash truck is showing its issues that it showed, um, a little while ago that I. Briefed y'all on the DEF issues, um. It's the check-ins and lights come back on, um, so tentatively, we're going to take the trash truck. Down March third to be able to work on it, um, the week of March third, I'll keep y'all updated as. Uh, that week comes close and. Just the status of the truck that week as well, so, but other than that, pretty okay in the DPW department.
I see the salt shed took a little bit of a beating.
Yep, uh, combination of different things, just an oversight on one of the operators. Um, he has just nicked it with the side of the backhoe, so.
Any questions for Public Works? Steve, how's the new phone system working?
Phones are working well.
Great.
Yeah, I haven't heard anything but positive feedback so far, so. Uh. That's led me to think we take this to the last final step, and that's looking at our fax system. Uh, it's basically just taking our existing fax line that we have on copper and bringing it into the voice over IP world, so that. The fax system would kinda emulate that scan to email kind of a platform. So when someone would fax us a document, we'd have a dedicated fax email repository, if you will, to receive them. And then to fax out, we would basically email rather than physically fax.
Do you fax, or receive faxes a lot, it's?
Really not.
Really?
Public safety.
Really?
Yeah, yeah, so.
I thought most people had moved beyond it to more email.
You would think so.
At least requests for information type of thing.
Um, not only that, but all, uh, every, um, EMS incident goes back to the hospital. Uh, receives the fax, we receive all our call info from Lake's region.
By fax.
Uh, by fax.
That's amazing.
Yep.
So I, we've created a, uh, a mock fax line, if you will, within the system that. I'm gonna share with Dave, and we're gonna try to test that out and see how the functionality is from his team's standpoint, since he does use it the most. And if he's happy with it, we'll look to make that transition. I have heard that these analog lines specifically with fax lines are going up dramatically in monthly. Costs to exceeding a hundred and fifty, two hundred dollars a month, we haven't felt that yet. We, we're paying forty-nine ninety-nine a month right now for our fax line, but I, I wanna have, I want us to be in front of that, because it is. Happening, um, not so much in the northeast yet, but in other parts of the country, so I wanna. Try to identify a solution to get out of that, because if we were to partner with our new phone system. That forty-nine ninety-nine charge would go to a dollar a month, so.
Right.
Oh.
Good.
Uh, for that fax line, so it's something I wanna continue to explore.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and then if you recall, back in December, we held a couple of public hearings to. Reconfigure the way that we bill for water and sewer usage, um, taking that. That system that we had had in place for a long time, that was a by, by fixture.
Right.
Yep.
Translating into a points system, and moving into a, just a simple per bedroom and per bathroom.
Yeah.
Taking a, a figure and multiplying that for our water rate, and another figure to multiply the total number of units, bedrooms and bathrooms to get a. Sewer rate.
Yep.
I have an update there, the past couple of weeks I've been working with Avatar, who is our water and, uh, our utility billing software provider. And yesterday we did our, a mock warrant under the new.
System, right.
And, um, happy to report that we, we got within two thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars of what we anticipated. Um. Total, so that's taking the both, both water warrant and sewer warrant, two hundred thousand dollars-ish combined, we were within about twenty-five hundred dollars.
Hmm.
Uh, which I was happy with, but I'm still drilling in, um, to see where that variance was.
Yeah.
What that variance was associated with, and what I'm seeing right now is that our initial analysis took in the new condos on Deveraux. And Bull Hill Way, and whereas we don't have some of that information in our assessing database yet, it missed. It didn't carry over those ten properties or so, so I think we're on the right track, we'll, we'll be doing some more testing next week to make sure that. Our first quarter water and sewer bills are active, you know, accurately reporting. Uh, based on the new structure that we have in place, but. We're getting there. And then finally, you mentioned the town report book, um. Being at the printer right now, which was something that was weighing heavily upon me with Sharon's departure. Last year, so I just wanted to thank Kristen for all her hard work that she put into that and. Getting us where we need to be on time, so, thank you, Chris. Other than that, if you have any questions.
You don't, you have anything? Alright. Municipal facilities, water, sewer, or anything?
Water and sewer uses are way up over the weekend, uh, we were. Um, in the two hundred and fifty to three hundred thousand gallon a day.
Hmm.
Level, which is our old vacation week numbers, so. Um, there's obviously, like Dave said, a lot of people are here. Um, and using, uh, the water and sewer systems, um, so. Uh. It, it's a normal kind of vacation week.
Um, we got the brake, brake fixed over at Mad River, wherever it was.
Yeah, it was a, it was a failed ball valve in the meter pit. Uh, it was a condo association issue, they fixed it uh, yesterday, so. Um.
No digging.
No digging, it was in the pit, so that was a big deal.
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, we did find that, we did find, we couldn't find the shut-offs because of the snowbankings, so.
Yeah.
We definitely have to consider as we, you know, replace lines and things like that, we need to put. Uh, shut-offs, uh, in a more accessible location. Um, I don't think that it's realistic, because we have hundreds of those between the water and sewer systems. Um, it's not really realistic to think we could replace them all as a group. Uh, but as we make repairs and move lines around, whatever we need to do in the future, that definitely needs to be a. Uh, consideration and get those uh, shut-offs out where plowing occurs. So that we can access them more readily.
Yeah.
Um, it took several hours on Monday to find a shut-off where we didn't have to shut down. Too much of town, we did end up shutting down a couple of condo associations, but. Uh, we were able to work with their property managers and let them know.
Do you have the locations for the shut-offs?
We do have, we do have them mapped, so we knew where they were, but when they're under a ten-foot snowbank, it doesn't really. Matter if you know where it is, cuz you still have trouble getting to it, so. Yep.
Anything else in water, sewer, rec?
Uh, rec programming is, is going, uh, well. Uh, this is a hard week for us, because we still have school in session, so it's kind of a regular. Uh, week.
Till what, five o'clock?
Until, uh, three, no, around three, three-thirty. Well, and, and then you have the after-school program, so yes, probably around four-thirty, quarter to five, we're still running the evening. Uh, programming, um, for families and for adults. Um, you know, we don't have as much open gym time and that sort of, you know, come as you can. Uh, so with the weather issues this week, it's been a challenge. Um.
Seen some commentary.
Commentary, but, you know, we're, um, Brooke has been responding to that and trying to explain to folks the. Kind of the parameters we're working under right now. It'll be a little bit different next week if we have weather issues or whatever, although it's supposed to be nice. Um, I would expect that we have less usage next week, given the weather forecast. And lower numbers of people. So they're they're doing okay.
Any questions on rec? All right, let's then go move on to the financial review.
So you have um the uh expenditure report that I gave you. Um we're sixteen point seven percent through the year and fifteen point nine percent spent on the budget. Um we. In BSNA, we still need to clarify how to import the proposed budget. So that we can get you an actual report that is budget to actuals. Um right now, in BSNA, everything for the. Uh fiscal year twenty five budget is still a zero, because we haven't imported the approved budget. Um so all we're tracking right now are the expenditures, we can manually look at this and. Do some comparisons, there are no departments that are other than the one I highlighted for debt service. That are significantly overspent year to date. Any questions on the expenditures that we have? And then I I wrote um that we are, we've collected approximately seventy four, seventy three, eight. In other than tax revenues, um that's three percent of our initial revenue estimate. Of two million four thirty nine, so.
We'll catch up.
Uh we will catch up, I mean, that doesn't include any water sewer billings or tax money or. State money, that's all twelve months down the road. Uh very typical for this time of year.
Yeah. And I see we have a number of charts on supplemental financial information.
Yeah, I just. Just had wanted you to have all of those in one place. So that you could look at them, I did give you corrected uh solid waste sheets. Uh there was a cell that was wrong in one of the calculations. And then, so I've made that correction, so says correct the copy at the bottom. Um any questions about those or anything else? That you would want to have available uh at town meeting top. I can get it ready now and.
Why are the two two thousand twenty four numbers so low?
For the MSW? Anything against municipal solid waste? This one?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Those are actuals. I, we did have a lot less expenditure on the disposal costs. Um that would that would have affected that, so.
Were you referring to the the revenues for twenty?
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't carry that out. Annual net change. Uh I need to um just carry that out for the annual net change.
But yeah, the revenues are clearly much slower, but I mean.
Yeah, I will, I will correct that, yeah, I'll check that again on the revenues. The expenditures, the capital expenses are actual, the operating budget expenses because of the reduction in. The reduction in uh disposal costs would be lower, I will make sure that the one seventy nine number is correct.
They look, I mean, they both look like they're.
The revenue number definitely needs to be adjusted, I'll I'll fix that for you.
I think the net's been looking pretty good the last few years.
Well, the net since you adjusted, yeah, since you, since we did the two years of adjustments on rates. We've we've.
Lessened the tax subsidy, right?
Yeah. Yeah, you had a twenty three tax subsidy of only six thousand dollars, sixty one hundred dollars.
Anyone on board have any other questions on?
So on the two thousand twenty four.
I'll check those, I'll give you a, I'll send you a sheet.
The with the rec department one?
Yep.
I don't know if I'm gonna be saying year to date for the columns. I I just with the rec department one, it the columns read year to date expenses from twenty ten. To twenty twenty four and it just seems like an odd.
Yeah, I I'll take it out, yeah, I can take that out.
It's just the yearly expense.
It's the yearly expense.
We're all of them actually, right, because twenty four is a settled number.
Right.
Well, it's settled, not audited, yes.
Right, you mentioned that, right?
Yep, so uh. Yeah, um I'll change that to actual rather than year to date.
It kind of, no, did we, do we do the additional parks program, was it in twenty nineteen?
That's when you see the big.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's when the jump occurring.
Yep.
At least in the gross, right?
In the budget.
Right.
And the town subsidy.
Well, yeah, because it.
Yeah.
It was during COVID, it was not generating any money.
Well, I mean.
And since then, we've tried to increase that programming, so that's why that. That uh difference has changed.
Right, I just think that as people look at this, especially looking at the twenty fifteen through eighteen. Where the town subsidy was forty percent or less, there's gonna be. You know.
Yep.
A a cause of question.
The jump up to closer to fifty. Anything else on any of these supplemental? Slides? Or info sheets?
And the CIP has been changed um to reflect the warrant article that we were reviewing.
I would imagine we may have some questions concerning the dredging. At town meeting and why it's not on the. Not on the uh.
Well, it is on the CIP.
Right, but not.
But not the budget.
But not the budget. I mean, I had nothing further than any of the numbers, did anybody? All right, shall we move on to calendar review, our next regular meeting is here on fifth of March. I will have difficulty making three PM, I mean, you guys can start without me, or if we can push it back an hour, I should be here or. Push it back a day.
But I can't do anything on the fourth.
Okay.
Could do four o'clock, but does four o'clock work?
Yeah, no, I should be back by, I should be back in time to make a four o'clock meeting on the fifth. Right, or.
Wednesday is the fifth.
Wednesday's the fifth and it'll be um if we can't do that later, what I was saying was actually moving it to Thursday the sixth. If you wanted to keep it three PM.
I don't know, four o'clock's alright with me.
Yeah.
It's four o'clock work for both of you guys, okay, no, I just.
The least.
Disruptive?
Yes.
All right, no, I just looking for just options, all right, so we'll have our next regular select board meeting at four PM. On March fifth, and the next regular planning board meeting is actually tomorrow, which is the. Postpone me from last, from last week.
On the um on the four PM meeting, you wanna move up the department heads to early in the meeting, so so that they can get out of here?
Okay, yep. When I go over the agenda with Mark, we'll we'll make those sorts of adjustments. Good idea. And um. Okay, that's uh. So I have at some point, we're gonna have to sit down, we can do it at the next meeting and determine what shifts. We want to do for uh town meeting day, voting from eleven to five. If I take a look to calendars and to make sure that's on the agenda for. For our next meeting, figure out how to handle those six hours. Anything else on calendar review? I think we're good. Let's move to board concerns and directives. So ex officio updates, so um. With the turnover in the board uh coming uh relatively soon, I just wanted to make sure that uh. We see what what all the what the various other duties that we're doing are, so as with with Dan here, so you can hear the sorts of other things. You get to do, um so right now, the way we have it um divided, only three I can think of. Beyond your select board meetings, uh a solid waste.
Working group.
Working group, thank you, uh the town core working group. And by law, we have to have a ex officio, a select board ex officio representative at the planning board as a. As a voting member, so right now, the way we've been doing it is, I think Wendy, you've handled. Those two and I've been doing the planning board um. When we reconstitute after the election, we'll have to relook at that and make sure we're still okay with that division of labor. So just something to to think about going going forward.
I add a fourth one.
Please.
Uh you're gonna have a lot of work on easements and.
Yes.
Uh having to potentially change and or adopt new easement. With regard to Golden Eagle, to the pond. Um you know, all the things that came up this year, as we were looking at them, and you may wanna have. A board member. Do the upfront work and bring things in, rather than try to do all the negotiation.
Yep, that makes great sense, all right.
Uh and you also are getting to the point where um you may wanna have one board member. Who uh as we get further into the wastewater treatment plant project.
Picks up that duty.
Maybe has a duty of doing some updates with Dylan and or the town manager. So, project manager, whomever. Uh but just tracks things for you, rather than do. You know, very detailed, lengthy updates every every meeting. There will be times when you have reports. That's absolutely, but just providing reports to the board, that may be a good way of doing it as well.
So five at this point seems like a.
Yeah, four or five.
Four or five, right, there's something to think about, Wendy, yeah. Going forward, just dividing up some of the duties and responsibilities. Um speaking of duties and responsibilities, I believe we have four planning board positions that open up. That we're going to have to appoint people to, uh we do that right after town meeting, I mean, literally right after, right after town meeting. The town meeting is adjourned, but we hang around and have a select board meeting to to do things like this. Uh three of the current four incumbents have asked to be reappointed, two are alternates. Rob Wilson and Alan Burko, one is permanent, uh excuse me, a full member, uh Mike Capel. And the fourth, uh I haven't heard yet, uh I guess hopefully I'll find out tomorrow. And that's Nancy, who's a full member. So right now, there are no vacancies, um and then it depends on how uh Nancy wants to move forward, so. Something to think about, I have an update tomorrow at planeboard meeting. See what Nancy's uh what Nancy's plans are in that regard. Uh and I just wanted to let, moving on to another topic, unless anyone had anything on on that topic. I had a couple conversations uh with a couple residences, residents period. Uh one was with Tom, I guess he's left, Tom Myrick, who expressed concern about the um. Well, what's the best way to put it, uh with the uh. With the work that was being done uh in the culverts and not being done in the summer, from from his association's perspective. Uh there should be more work done in in those covers to keep the. The weeds down, et cetera, et cetera, but I think last year was a bit unusual and that uh we had. Work going down on Cascade Ridge, that took people away from that sort of weed whacking. Job right away, so but I told them we would, we would look at that. Um and he had a question about the accuracy of what's in the uh registry in Grafton County. On uh the base of the lollipop, I think is what we would call it. And I I've already discussed this with with Mark and you can take a look at it and see, there seems to be a difference of opinion as to. How far the town road extends beyond the base of the lollipop and you know, it's a Y.
What's the lollipop?
Oh, it's the little, uh sorry about that, it's the circle here. It's the circle in in Moose Run.
Oh, yeah.
Right, and it's in town maps, we have town responsibility comes out to below the base of that circle. But and according to Tom, uh their records show that it actually towns extends. I think he said twenty feet up on either side of that circle, so it goes up the circle a little bit on either side. And he asked if he could take a look at that, and I said. See what the registry is, but our GIS, I mean, it was, it's based on what. Subdivision approvals and. And um. Craig uh just wanted to make sure that we're, we continue to pay attention to the. To the uh parking issues that he experiences and trying to help him find a solution. To those, to those parking issues, I, I think last weekend was. Unusual with the ski jarring, I didn't hear of any particular problems.
Uh the parking was.
Parking, because we had.
Probably the best.
Right.
The last four years, I mean, the bankings were pushed backs a- all the way to the trees, so.
But that's because it was a special event, we had a police detail, it wasn't a normal.
And the parking on Valley Road was allowed to be a little looser, because there were a lot of people there.
Again, for the special event. And he's looking for some kind of solution on weekends, I think we uh were just normal tubing. I think we helped him chief, uh helped me here that uh. With uh Tyrell to uh put some signage up, I think it was, the remind people they can park. In the parking lots by town square.
Greg put up those signs.
Yeah, those were initiated by by them, um Tyrell was okay with it.
Okay.
Long as, because it wasn't, the wording of the sign wasn't. Telling the tubing folks that it was exclusive for tubing, that this was overflow, so he was okay with that.
Okay.
So. That's.
So he had a sign at at town square, and then he had another sign by his property.
Right.
Said basically the same thing, if if this is filled, go back to the town square.
Yeah.
Right.
And then and then we had, did we have the ones out, no parking between these?
Our sandwich boards.
The problem with it has been the snowstorm, so we've been falling up and.
We actually did not put, we did not put them out on Saturday. Um because because of the storm was coming and.
Yeah.
The parking, they, everyone was parking on the golf clubhouse side. They were down further than the identified parking area. But everybody was off the road to the off the white line. So they were out of the traveled ways um and I didn't see anything that was causing any real problems.
No, we didn't wanna create any confusion by adding those signs in there.
With the ski jarring, right?
Right, so that was unusual, we can't. Just keep them on one side and they were there to manage it, and then if it got filled, they were gonna help with just directing people where to park, so.
The only, the only participant. And spectator comment really that was made repeatedly was porta potties, was what?
Porta potties. For the ski jarring. Uh for the ski jarring, the last, right. Yeah.
That was my comment.
That it was the one that just kept getting said, so.
How do you, I guess you can do porta potties at the winter?
Whatever, I don't know if you can or not, but.
They do, they deliver for special long term, so.
Yeah, that's true.
He has them out for the entirety of winter season.
I'm sorry?
Some people might have them out for the entirety of their season.
Well, I mean, I guess that's something you can look at uh as part of the special event permitting process for the ski jarring.
Have it.
Yeah, next year, I mean, it'd be up to the organizers to.
Yes.
To take care of that issue.
A request from us to make sure that was there, we were hoping that the. Bathrooms that were there at they were operational at the.
Yeah.
Dead was gonna alleviate that problem, but apparently it wasn't, so.
It wasn't enough.
Wasn't enough.
And Leah's numbers uh were fifty participants, they did lose participants when it got changed from. Sunday to Saturday. Uh so fifty. Actual people doing the ski jarring and around four to five hundred. Uh spectators, so it was a smaller event, but it was still well attended. Um you know, and with the change of day.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's expected.
It'd be expected to lose some.
Can I ask a quick question? With respect to events. Um when the. Hockey group has tournaments.
Mm hmm.
Do we know when they're coming in? Do we know how big they are?
Yeah.
Do we know all of that in advance?
Yeah, about two weeks ahead of time we get the schedule.
Because.
But they not considered special events.
But I understand that, but at some point Craig's concerns. Have to do with. When they're ha- when they're bringing in far too many teams.
Right.
Mm hmm.
Then we can really handle here in the valley.
Yep.
And one of the thoughts I had was that. Possibly in circumstances like that. They should be induced to pay for potentially additional. Police support in town. Cuz I've, you know, I keep hearing things around town. About, and people tell me this all the time. Who's new um. About, you know, the bad hockey parents. The hockey parents getting drunk, the fights and so forth. And it seems to me that when the hockey groups are having these, if you will, larger than. Let's say, normal. Tournaments and such. That. You know, if we don't have additional people on duty and. That, you know, we're running into more problems and. You know, that's something we should consider. But I think they should be induced to pay those.
Well, we do have on our schedule to be reviewing the hockey.
Get your copy of the agreement.
Yeah, we we want, we do plan to take a look at it, but we have no, I think, ability legally to. Um limit. From just from the lease agreement aspect, if we were to try to limit, it would have to come from public safety or.
No.
A life safety issue, but I don't know how we, I don't think that's ever really been an issue, right?
It hasn't been in the in the additions, we have added staff within the last four years.
Mm hmm.
Uh and um. They've been handling it as. You know, as as those calls happen, uh it's very cyclical, the history here is. Uh you know, the town gets saturated with hockey. Uh the patience with hockey wears very thin.
Mm hmm.
Uh and they try to enact rules and hold the tournaments accountable to. These teams, because a lot of the, a lot of the behavior that you're seeing is not criminal behavior. It's disruptive, it's loud, it's running.
Behavioral.
It's rude.
It's behavioral and.
And it's.
Our position has always been with the hotels is. If you're having these issues, you can't handle these issues, then hire security. Uh to handle these issues, because it's not a good look for us. As a uniformed police officer to tell kids to stop running in the hallways. You know, it's it's uh.
But the visible presence of police within town. Helps.
Absolutely.
Because just having a police officer standing there, the kids have a level of respect.
Mm hmm.
And they they have a higher level of respect because of the uniform and such.
Mm hmm.
Just right off the bat, so they're going to behave better. And in general, the parents are going to behave better as well. Because of that, and that's that's my.
I'm not sure I'd make that.
No, I think there's some truth to that.
But.
Um I don't think we need to live in a police state. But I'm saying that. Potentially, when we have. If you will. Larger examples of these tournaments and such, it's something we should seriously consider.
I I think it's a conversation we need to have with the academy even. Uh like if if there's a possibility to.
Mm hmm.
Request they not exceed a certain number, but it's a conversation I believe we need to have with them, and I kind of feel badly.
And.
Talking about them without.
And then the adjuvant to my question is, are there other groups? Beyond, if you will, hockey. Where we've experienced challenges and difficulty. In a similar vein, such as a. Let's say a very large wedding. Something like that, are we seeing problems from that? And I'm asking you.
Because because of.
Your respect.
Because of what we do, we always have to deal with weddings, we deal with conferences. Uh of varying different groups, uh some are a little more. Uh require a little bit more attention from us than others.
Yeah.
Um. Same thing, we had a plumbers and peckfitters union here doing an outing over the weekend.
Yeah.
You know, you out of Boston, if you wanna address generalizations.
Yeah, I'm just wondering about sizes of groups coming in and whether they're.
Well.
Yielding problems that. Would we, you know, necessitate the need for an additional police presence.
Well, I think you have to take that. One step. Back. And start talking about, do we wanna spend money? To hire more people. To deal with these sorts of issues, if these issues really exist to the extent. That people say. They exist.
Or or should should the potty have to have to pay?
Responsible for that.
Right, that's what I'm getting at. So we.
That takes.
Let's say there's going to be an extremely large event where we believe we need additional.
But a basis, I mean, that's. As I said, it comes down to. Public safety, life safety issues.
We have to look at it, it's very hard to differentiate one group from the other, so operationally. We always maintain a presence at all these places, and police officers are required. To walk every single hotel Friday, Saturday nights, every night on the weekends. They park their car. And it will take them an hour and a half to two hours to complete a full trip.
Yeah.
Through on foot, whether they're going through the Golden Eagle, walk every floor. Walk over to town square.
I'm not disputing what they're doing, I'm just thinking we may need additional personnel at various periods. That's all, and it's a suggestion I think we may need to consider.
Mm hmm. Right, and as I said, the the bottom line will be money.
Correct, but it's not clear the. Town has to take on the burden. Of paying for all of that presence.
I agree with that, but then the question is, on what basis do we? Ask uh businesses to spend more money? For security if we're not hearing that public safety or security is. An issue.
Well, we know that with. If you will, or I shouldn't say we know. The pre- the premise is that the hockey group tends to be out of control, cause more problems and so forth. Okay. Whether that's, I don't have the numbers behind me to back that statement up, that's certainly what I hear through town from lots of individuals. And so. If we ended up with a system. Where the board had the option of waiving. Fees for a particular group, like we might have a veterans group that causing no problems at all. So forth, or we might have another group. That does cause problems where they end up paying additional fees. In other words, the people that you would have to hire additionally. Through your, you know, per diem approach. And they would be responsible for that.
See, but now I think you've worked, now you're starting to work into a special event where we do have those sorts of.
Right.
Requirements, at what point does a normal business operation.
Right.
On a weekend convert to a special event requiring permitting, and we we can levy these sorts of. Uh requirements on them for public safety uh issues, it's it's. We've been around this.
Yeah, you've got to.
Problem a while.
You have to develop policies around.
Dave Dave will come to us with, if he's got a request for, let's say uh. A big running event. Up to the mountain, from the town up to the mountain, he'll come to us and say. I got this request, you know, it looks all right, we think we got it covered. You know, they got good organization, we we discuss. Events like that. Now, we don't discuss every wedding for sure.
No, that's normal business operation.
No, we don't, but but special events that we feel that need extra. That do need a a detail officer and. We will say you need a detail officer, here's the rate. And. They'll show up at this time and be here till.
Mm hmm.
Whenever the event concludes and and a lot of times in town. Um you know. Fourth of July or any of those other stuff, we. Take care of that, or you know, the town. Um bears that to put those extra. People on to to be able to.
Can I?
Yeah, please go ahead, Wendy.
Can I suggest that we dig into this?
Yep.
Not at. Towards the end of the meeting, cuz I think it's a valid point and.
Mm hmm, I agree.
We also need to have that conversation with the hockey academy.
If it's specifically on 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 hockey, but we've been around this issue, we've been trying to get a handle on a special event. Definition and so forth. It's uh. It's. Quite complicated. And I. Think I agree with Wendy that we need to, we need to discuss it as a. As a separate topic, agenda item, uh if it's specific to a particular business, then we should ask them here. Uh so they can participate in that discussion. Good. Good. Everybody good on that? Anybody else have any board concerns and directives?
Well, just um kind of updates in sort of the ex officio realm of things, uh just reporting back the. Usual solid waste working group, um I feel like we started to really. Turn a corner a little bit and start formulating where within what we're assuming, hoping is seven years of. Being able to have the ability to. Possibly radically change our our collection system and. So I guess both to just let, you know, anyone watching the recording know that this group is actively working on on. That approach as a seven year plan, there will be some expenditures that seem frustrating. Um if we're looking at an end goal, but. So we're we're really kind of hashing out what would be an ideal. Plan, what we'd be looking for in in cost savings and inefficiencies. In this seven years from now. So it is kind of more digging in on that, so just wanted to kind of put that out there if I'm forgetting anything more.
No, I I think the the biggest thing was we, as part of that discussion, there was a question about the dumpster. Purchases. That are part of the budget this year.
There was, yeah.
There and we we are looking at, we we can't. Make definitive plans for at least seven years, so the money. The the fifty eight thousand dollar warrant article for dumpster replacements, those are dumpsters that are broken now. And we need to. Whether we change everything completely. After that seven year mark, we still need the dumpsters. At the town meeting this year. So maybe we start changing the amounts next year or the year after. But because there's going to be this known period where the treatment plant gets built. And then after sometime after twenty thirty. There could potentially be. Significant changes in the. Collection process. Um you know, in these intervening years, we still need to take care of what we have.
Based on the system we have.
Based on the system we have and we're not gonna be able to significantly change that.
Right, essentially like the wastewater treatment facility, we have to keep the old one going, so we get the new one and it's.
So it that kind of was driving that. Conversation, so.
Mm hmm.
Um I think the group came to the. Conclusion as well that we needed to do what is in the plan this year.
Yes.
And then we can maybe make modifications to those out years. Uh and. Do smaller, if if we start to see. Well, and if the state significantly changes, uh Megan has. Uh the folks from Bethlehem coming to visit next week. So she'll be talking to them.
Good, yeah.
Yeah.
So.
And the governor's come out with a very strong position.
Absolutely. Yeah, so we'll see where where the laws go.
Yes.
This session, yeah.
Um the only other thing I was wondering if if we should put out something um. Reviewing the documents that individuals will need if they're first time voters at town meeting, because that has changed this year, right?
Mm hmm, the law was changed and it's the first election.
So are we perhaps.
Do you have any?
New documents?
Yeah.
Well, what documents they need to bring if they're new voters, they they used to be able to just sign an affidavit, right? And they can't do that anymore, they have to bring.
A birth certificate, a passport. I think.
I have that, well, I can post it up on the town website and the supervisors are meeting on the first, so they can. Talk to them directly or they can call.
Yeah, just I feel like if we have a.
I think if you go to the supervisor site.
Yeah, I know, but I I overheard some kerfuffles in previous years of of known people in town, oh, you know who I am, why do I need my license? And maybe just as a nice reminder to people that for town meeting now that is also a thing.
Well, I mean, there are some important uh issues there, for example, if. You are coming to register for the first time.
Yes.
I do not believe a driver's license will satisfy.
Right.
The requirement for.
Right.
Identification, be a birth certificate or a passport.
Right.
I believe.
Okay.
And proof of.
But and then there's a second part of that is a a domicile, some other document that shows. Um a a bill or something that you actually are a resident of the town.
Yeah.
That that is what the law states, for those who knew, now those who registered already, it's it's just showing your identification when you come to vote. This is specifically geared to new, and I frankly, I don't know what. The numbers have been over the last few elections, they seem to register well, obviously in November, it looks like they registered.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, several.
Yeah, a bunch of thirty or forty, I think. Yeah, I think it was up in that area. Uh so now, yeah, and they. In future, they'd have to come in with a birth certificate or a passport.
What, yeah, and I'd check with Gene too before we.
Yeah.
Come up with the wording. I really would like.
The state already puts it out, I mean, it's a document from the secretary of state.
I, well, we could regurgitate that.
Yeah, we can make it simpler.
Yeah, I would do. And make it more available, people don't go to sites.
Yeah. That was just my thought, just to make.
But it's something we can coordinate for the upcoming election. Because that will be our responsibility too, because. That's what we're supposed to do.
Yep. Yep. Okay.
Anything else?
That was it for me.
Anything for you, Bob?
No.
All right, um I don't see a correspondence on the agenda, so I assume there was nothing, nothing for this.
Yeah.
Okay, so I will. Take a motion to move into a non-public session.
So moved.
And a second. All in favor?
It's for personnel.
Oh, yeah, excuse me, for for personnel matter? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Dan. Uh just let us know when we're. Talking only to ourselves.